Call this meeting to order. This meeting and all other meetings, this council will open to the public. Rep. notes been posted and given to the press in accordance with the statute so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. Roll call.
Appleby?
Here.
Nadowski?
Here.
Gunderson?
Here.
Brunner?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Here.
Kemp is not present.
Okay, in our order of things here, we're gonna skip number two and go right to number three. Discussion on possible action and special assessment, Weyoga Estates. Hearing on special estate, special charge assessment. I'll let Patrick explain all that.
Yeah, so, we have a development agreement with Weyoga Estates. And what I will do is lay out, there's a couple relevant areas of that development agreement that relate to a target or a performance, it's like a benchmark. I can tell you that Mr. Murphy is here with Weyoga Estates. And in addition to a hearing on the special charge, which is essentially a penalty that's prescribed in the development agreement, he is also requesting the ability to consider a renegotiation or an extension of the agreement. In speaking with city attorney Kelney on this, procedurally, there's probably two procedures that you have to do. Number one is, take a look in open session at the development agreement, because it's public document. Take a look at what a penalty is that's prescribed in there and determine whether one exists according to the development agreement. If it exists, then you consider a special charge, because that's how it's prescribed to be penalized in the development agreement. If you determine that there is a special charge that you wish to assess, you would have an open session vote on that tonight. Either way, you'll have a vote on it. If you determine that you want to assess the charge, it would be assessed against the properties. But because tax bills have gone out, it technically is like a lien until, it's like an 11-month lien until next year. That then, if it's approved, would be the item that would be subject to a renegotiation. In a renegotiation, that would then be held in like a closed session. And Mr. Murphy has requested the ability to speak in closed session. Again, for tonight, this is an item that would be just in open session, so there's certain things that would be more relevant for an open session. Some competitive financial items would be more appropriate for a closed session. So again, if you approve or assess the charge, it would become essentially a lien on the property. If you vote not to assess the charge, essentially, the development agreement would be considered closed out, related to any performance penalties. Because the penalty would be subject to your vote. If you vote not to assess it, well, then that's, that's that. We will go through the agreement here in a second. There is a hearing, so Mr. Murphy's available or able to speak in open session on this. And there are some, some items in your packet here, maybe we'll refer to page number one. There's 10, 10 pages. I think what we'll take a look at here is page one through eight. Page nine and 10 is some information provided by Weyoga Estates, but it would be more relevant for a closed session discussion. Number one is the letter, back in November 18th, what Weyoga Estates had been looking to do was refinance. And with a refinance, the title companies typically send us a letter seeking out, are there any assessments that are outstanding on properties? What we usually do with that then is we take a look at any development agreements that are out there. That's what triggered the review of the development agreement. The letter specifically outlines section 13 of the agreement, which is included as pages three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. But section 13 lays out construction increment. And so there was a schedule of a number of years where 64 cumulative residential units had to be constructed. When you take a look at that target, to date, 53 units have been constructed in that neighborhood. So, the development agreement that we have lays out what they call a performance penalty. The performance penalty is calculated to be $7,313 per unit. And the calculation on that unit is under, it's on page eight, there's an exhibit A to this agreement, and it lays out what were the costs involved with the different phases, with the roadway, storm sewer, curb and gutter, there's not curb and gutter, it's actually more of a drainage, it's like ditching out there. But storm, there's a storm water component to the development. But it takes in certain costs, it reduces for assessments that were charged directly to him. And at the very end then, there is a target amount of money that is targeted to be gathered through the performance benchmarks, and that amount is $468,045. What they did was they took the amount that the city, at the time, back in 2001, was looking to recoup, divide that by the 64 residential units, and that's how they get to 7,313 per unit. Again, back to the letter, because it appears that there were 11 units that had not been hit, multiply that by the performance penalty of 7,313, that comes up to $80,443. Procedurally, what we do is when, when this amount is identified as being owed, we send out an invoice. Because in city ordinance, the procedure for special charges is that the city invoices, gives a 20-day period, which is on the second page. It shows that on November 18th, we had a 20-day period on the invoice. Mr. Murphy had requested a hearing of the council, and that's how we get to this point here. And the hearing again is on whether or not the special assessment charge, as it's related in the development agreement, whether that's something that you believe should be assessed or not. A couple of the concerns, if you look at probably the second to last paragraph, or the last paragraph on the letter, again, the reason why this was brought up was because the title company had requested something like a title search or record search on our end. On our end, the intent was not to hold up or delay any kind of refinancing, but it is something that by law were required to disclose. Mr. Murphy had indicated to me earlier this week that the refinancing did go through, and he can maybe speak on that a little bit more too. But this, this assessment that's out there, again, it's an amount that, per the agreement, is identified as being owed. It's up to you to determine whether that's a charge that you want to assess or not. If you do assess it, it seems as though his refinancing has gone through, and it also, because the tax bills went out, the assessment technically sits out there at the county until next December. So the second part of it, if we get to that, a renegotiation or an extension on the agreement would or could involve the assessment figure, because technically, it's not imposed until next year. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So in theory, tonight, what we're looking at strictly is it's a hearing on a proposed special charge, and it's, it's going to be, by the city attorney's recommendation, it'll be in open session. So if you have questions, that might be better suited for a closed session, you know, those, I would advise that you do not hold that either way on the decision if, if Mr. Murphy's not giving an answer, if you ask a question. I'd hope that you just wouldn't ask a confidential or competitive type question, if that makes sense. Is there anything further you'd like to add on that?
Real quickly, you had mentioned that, I think it was like a $435,000 amount, that was what determined the total number of units. So the city was looking at recouping about $435,000 in taxes, and that was what determined...
Yeah, it's page, page eight. It's exhibit A. There's a, there's a formula, and again, this, this is from, the agreement was reached back in 2001. So for reference.
Okay. So, a couple things on my behalf. First, the refinancing did go through, and that was because I had to, I had to cross-collateralize and, and refinance another property to get that done. And also, just on the, on the basis of this property and the taxes that I paid, if they were looking to recoup $435,000, just on the property taxes on the apartments, I've already paid over $700,000 in taxes, and then over $115,000 on the lots and condos. So, I believe that the city, the units weren't all there, but they've recouped their money and more in the, in the timeframe, so I hope some of that would be, would be looked at now. So, I believe I've provided a, a very good service for the city. The apartments that we have there, we run very tightly, we have good people there. It's very hard to, you know, in a smaller market, to get the rents high enough to, you know, we have to provide an affordable unit for the tenants, as well as, as, you know, provide good management and a very nice place to live. So, I'm hoping that this assessment can be, can be dropped based on the fact that I've already paid significantly more than the city initially was looking for. Other developments in that industrial park, from that time, have not happened. If, if building more apartments there was possible to make them, make money, if, if I was making money hand over fist, I could build more apartments there, and I would. But the market isn't there in a rental amount that really makes sense. And the units have been, the lots have been listed with two different brokers from Opaquah, broker from London, two Weyoga brokers, an Oshkosh broker, and an Appleton broker. This happened, this happened in a timeframe when the market took a significant downturn. And it was very, very hard, you know. We were hoping that Patrick would live there, but we just couldn't quite get it done based on the requirements that, that his wife had. So, I would look for some of those things, and I already injected more money than the city was looking for, to hopefully have this item released today.
Anybody got anything to say here?
Did the city of Weyoga fulfill all its obligations on this contract?
To the best of our knowledge, on the contract, a lot of what was required of the city was to, I'll say, sell the land. And it was, there was a formula on what a price was for the land. The land had been transferred, water sewer, the road had been put in for the things that were required of the city. On that end, you know, in our knowledge, a lot of the stuff had been, had been done from the city, a lot of it in this agreement is related to, because the city set up a TIF, TIF that included this section and the industrial park west. There's a formula on paying back a lot of the assessments, or assessments and costs in there, not all directly related to the residents.
So the way, when the TIF was set up, one loop of the infrastructure was put onto the TIF funds that serviced the industrial park, the west industrial park. The other loop, I paid for out of special assessments, and that was, so, even of that, you know, I've got a couple hundred thousand dollars of special assessments that I've paid, paid already.
The other, the comment that we have, and it relates to attorney Kelney taking a look at this, he's technically on a leave out of the office this month, but I was in touch with him today. He had mentioned, and I'm passing through his information in the closed session, or in the open session, so it's, it's not anything that's privileged or anything like that. On his end, what he said was, the, the agreement itself here, there's two components that he believes the city should look into. And the one is related to the target units that were put out there. And the other item then is 18C, which relates to the sales of lots. That though, the sale of the lots, and then, you know, within two years, having to provide development on those lots, it's an item of the agreement that attorney Kelney believes is worth taking a look at, or maybe even renegotiating with, with the developer. Tonight, what you have on here is the performance penalty. And attorney Kelney had recommended that the council consider approving that assessment if you wanted to talk about the agreement, the other aspects of the agreement. And I think on his, on his end, what he's looking at is, if you approve the assessment, you still have something there to talk about with the agreement. If you do not approve the assessment, in a way, the development agreement sort of closes itself out.
Yeah. Because basically, it's more than just one violation of the agreement, correct?
It's one area to discuss. I don't know if it's, I don't, I don't know if it's a violation of the agreement, because right now, this process with a special assessment, you're sort of following the agreement, you're not violating the agreement. Does that make sense?
No.
So it says if, if there weren't enough, if there weren't 64 units constructed, in following the agreement, this process would happen then, to discuss a special charge. If there was a violation of the agreement, that would be maybe another matter to be considered. But it's not a matter that's up for tonight.
Okay. I guess my question is, if we approve a special assessment, it's how, basically go on the books for 11 months?
It will, it will be a negotiating item?
Okay. That's how I'm getting that. In other words, then we'd have 11 months to negotiate something with him? And if we do, then we can erase that, basically?
Yeah, you have the ability to do that, yeah.
If he just, basically a charge that he's bound by, unless between us, we come up with
a better deal that would help both of us. In a sense, we're protecting ourselves, but we're helping him out in some way. I mean, not the way you want, but it's, it gives us another 11 months to hopefully work something out.
Figure out a reasonable compromise.
And if we can work out something that we like, and he's happy with, it'll take care of itself. Right? Am I direct?
I would rather do that than just close the agreement.
It's, it's really probably up to your wish.
Yeah.
If, if you assess it, you have something to talk about.
Right, that's what I mean.
If you don't, you don't have anything to talk about. Either way, you can, you can go either way. It's up to you.
I, I, I'm agreeing with the mayor that we should keep the assessment, and therefore, keep the dialogue open, and keep the, keep the agreement open.
For that purpose.
And, yeah, and, and figure out something down the road.
I'm sure, our intent is not to put you in a bind, but to do what we're elected to do, protect the city.
Right.
And thankfully fill the intended agreement, which was to see the area developed.
We have to, we have to abide by the wishes of the council that made this agreement too. I mean, so we have the citizens, we have a council that did this, and we have an honor.
Yeah, but, and they probably never saw that the market could crash like it did, either, you know, real estate. They, you can't see that, everything just...
No, you can't.
So, you know, modifications, there could have been a clause to begin with, saying pending market and the need for such units, you know, there could have been something like that. So I think you're right to say, work together with us, so it's, it's a good deal, you know, for both sides.
It would have been wise on my part, since the open number was, was 435, it would have been obviously wise on my part to say, you know, the number of units weren't till the actual taxes collected hit that number, because I've actually provided almost double the number that the city was looking for. And that's where it really comes into a very, you know, and then this was brought about by, you know, you know, me having discussions with the title company, they, you know, they said they were gonna be in contact with the city as well, and I said, well, we have to figure out what this, what this agreement means. So, if it wasn't for our side, this would still be down under the table, it wouldn't be known about. And then the fact that I've already paid double the amount, I would really, I really would think it would be the city operating in good faith, since they've gotten double what they wanted already in, in their coffers.
I guess I would like further discussion too, just because the city did a lot of things in good faith in this agreement, just from the sale of the property. And the intent was to see the development, not just to see the, the TIF, the, or the amount that they, it costed the city to put in the road be met. There is other intentions there.
Is it possible for this to not actually have the lien put in place and remain open and discuss without the lien in place?
Procedurally, what we're looking at here is, according to your ordinance, you have a section that's called special charges. And the special charges, essentially, once, once you're aware of the penalty by the agreement, there's a bill that goes out, and that's where we have an invoice in here. And the procedure with special charges is that there's a certain timeline when there's a bill out. And there's a time when you have a hearing on it, and it's tonight, you have to act on the special charge tonight, either up or down. And that's where it's tough, because the first time you get to speak about this in open session, because there's seven people in the city council, everybody's got an idea, Mr. Murphy has probably some ideas, in trying to negotiate how you handle the assessment without actually voting on the assessment or assessing it, it's pretty tough procedurally. So, either you assess this charge, or you don't. Now, the back end, if you choose to assess this charge, there's a five-day window that essentially, he would have an opportunity to pay it. And if he doesn't pay it in five days, then it gets filed with the county. And what it's filed under is, under the property, if he would look at refinancing or selling or using this property as like collateral somewhere else...
Wouldn't be a clear title until it's taken care of.
It's sort of, I hate to say it's like a lien, but it's, it's more of a hold. And then, it's only out there as long as the city allows it to be out there. So if you would take it back by renegotiating the agreement, like within two weeks, you could turn that around and take it off. But you, but you do have, either you have to vote it up or down, and then you get roughly a week or two before you file it, or you don't.
So we need a motion to, to file a special charge assessment against Weyoga Estates for $80,443,000?
You are, you're looking at whether to approve or not approve a special charge of 8443. And so a motion either way would be either to approve it or to not approve it.
You know, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it. But there again, we could...
Eventually, we could renegotiate or...
And we could shoot to make it a priority for the new year. We could, because you said, made a comment that in two weeks, it could, you know, not reality right now, but it could be...
I would think it would be a priority when we're in another, because we've brought it, we have to stay on top of it. We don't want to let it sit for 11 months.
That's what I mean, we want to make it a priority for Mr. Murphy's sake.
You know, I also think that we're looking at basically 11 units here. But I think if you could get some of them lots sold and get a couple houses built out of it, that should definitely change your attitude, outlook on it. Because there's 25 lots out there with nothing on them, and if you could have yourself, a contractor, come in and build a few spec houses or something, that would go a long way to...
Well, let's get past it.
I'm assuming he's probably commented on that. I've talked to him about that too, but, I mean, right, right now, you've got, you've got a motion and a second on the assessment, and then I guess it would still be under discussion yet.
Discussion.
Okay. We got a motion on the floor.
We got a second too.
And we got a second?
Well, you could, if there's discussion to be had, it'd still be open yet.
Right. I think we all want to discuss more, but the way to discuss more is get the assessment out there, and then from there, we can come up, we can brainstorm together, work as a...
On the way that this is on the agenda, comment from Mr. Murphy is allowed too, you know, until, until I guess he's done saying that.
How many want to vote first?
He's got a comment before you.
No, it has to be before a vote.
Yeah.
You got another, maybe, comment on some of the other lots, possible, or anything?
They're currently listed with Frost Realty.
Yeah.
I'm hoping Heritage, Heritage Homes has that building on the corner of 10 and Reek Road that I've been in discussion of trying to get that moved over. And hopefully, they could be using that as a, as a model home and go from there. But they've not, you know, we're having conversations, they need to move that home, but they don't have too much thought of beyond that at this stage, but hopefully, that could develop some more.
That would be a big plus, for sure.
Are there lots sold that people are waiting to build their homes on?
There are two lots that are sold, one individual, they were sold, I'm gonna say two years ago, it's, it's in that neighborhood, and he, in the beginning, said he was planning a building within 18 months, and then I talked to him about, you know, building in two years, and, and he would have backed out of the deal if I had to make him guarantee he was gonna build in two years.
That's part of your stipulation in your...
I know, but it's, at that stage, you would either sell two lots and have some hope that they'd be built, or, or not have them sold at all. So, you know, as rare as buyers have been there, it's hard to just kick one out the door.
Can I, can I ask a question? If, so again, I laid out that the assessment or special charges was on the agenda. If you're looking at assessing the charge, are you open to continuing a dialogue on a renegotiation of the agreement, or certain terms, or I guess working with the developer? Or would the assessment be the final?
I think that's what I've heard of. I think I've heard everybody say here that we do want to be looking at, that, that we did this to keep the door open for talking and the possible negotiation. I, I thought that was...
Yeah.
What we had all said, that we weren't looking at a final $80,000 or nothing else.
And to make it a priority, so we're not...
Right.
Just...
I guess going into negotiation, the best thing for us to hear would be, you know, what your plan is from this point on, to develop minus a, a, a hope to get somebody in there, you know, we'd have to know some details to it. But that, that's why I guess we keep it open, is so that there's an opportunity to get some... Well, that's just it, you know, we, we need to look at this agreement, maybe make a new one. Now that the economy has changed from what it was in '01, you know, we, we need to look at this, but the only way to do that is to do the assessment and keep things rolling. And that was the reason for the, for the motion.
Yes.
Was that we can keep discussion going.
I think that's the whole gist of what I started out, I said, it's our responsibility to protect the citizens' tax dollars, but we don't want, certainly don't want the amount of business either.
Right.
We certainly want to work with them.
We gotta find something.
Hopefully get more going.
Protect everybody's interests and, you know...
Yep.
Anybody else? Dick, vote.
And this, who would have a roll call vote? Brunner?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Nadowski?
Aye.
And Gunderson?
Aye.
All ayes. Five ayes.
Now, the motion that was made, there was not required any extra verbiage on that?
No, essentially, it's a, it's an approve or, or not approve. I think, on my end, that I'll seek some direction, maybe on what you would prefer if we're looking at a negotiation.
Right, I think that's something to be discussed...
Yes.
At a later date, where we can...
Yeah. Mr. Murphy, I know that's probably not much you wanted tonight, but I guess we all want you to know that we want to work with you, and hopefully turn this around and make both of us feel happy. Apparently now, we're gonna have basically the next year to either see something happen, renegotiate, or do something, you know?
Well, I do appreciate your position here, I understand, I understand why this is where it is right now, and I appreciate you guys having the open mindedness to look forward in, into the future to continue to, to work through these issues. And, and I also agree, the sooner we can get this taken care of, the better.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that it done for me?
That, that would be it, yeah.
Thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Most of it back to you soon.
Okay.
I'll be in touch there for sure. Thank you, sir.
You guys have a good night.
You too.
All right.
Do you...
Let's all sit and stare at the camera. Pretty wave at the nice people.
You can cut this out, right?
We'll get back in five.
Yeah, you edit whatever you want.
Yeah, the problem though is, if it's extended, because I timestamp, and then at the end, they'll say what time. So if, if it's an hour and 40 minutes, and there's an hour and 34 minutes of...
Maybe we get somebody to sing some Christmas songs for us, anything you want to sing.
Shady?
We could put up a little, add in a little, you know, PowerPoint, make a little thing there, a five-minute break.
We'll return after station identification.
Yeah.
Stay tuned for more.
We can all make faces like Trump made last night.
I didn't even watch. I didn't get, I meant to watch, but I didn't, I wasn't able to.
That, that was the best thing I ever saw. They were just hilarious.
Better than Biden's, remember his during the debates way better? That was so childish. It was just like, really?
Donald is so funny, you know, the other ones didn't do bad, but he, his facial expressions...
He's just doing this for, just for fun, I think, just for his exposure, like he's always done. He's taken every criticism and turned it around to benefit himself.
Did anybody watch Saturday Night Live last week with Will Ferrell? If you get a chance, watch it on YouTube. Every does a W. It's hilarious. He does a perfect job.
We'll beat it at number four.
You're back.
Okay, we'll go to number four. Closed session pursuant to 19.85 Wisconsin statute conferring with legal counsel for governmental body was rendering oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which is or likely to become involved. And the reason for this closed session is to discuss the general contractor claim relating to municipal building. Construction constantly choose to convene an open session at the completion of closed session in order to take action.
I'll make a motion to go in closed session.
Second?
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Roll call. Roll call.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Nadowski?
Aye.
Appleby? Rasmussen?
Aye.
Runner?
Aye.
731.